19th, 2021 Legislative Meeting of the Haverhill School District Board of School Directors. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. The opinions expressed by any member of the public do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Haverhill School District Board of School Directors and are solely those of the presenter. The Haverhill School District Board hereby expressly disclaims any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public. Would you please salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Riker, could you please do roll call?
Madam President, thank you. Okay, Jen Wilson.
Yeah.
Dave Brown.
Here.
Eric Coons. Teresa Brown.
Here.
DJ Schultz.
I'm here.
Susan Hansiger Hoff.
I'm here.
Jim Greenall. Marion McCouch.
Here.
Tara Connor Halston.
Here.
You.
Thank you. So we did have an executive session prior to this meeting for legal and personnel matters. We will have a presentation tonight by Mr. Riker.
Thank you again, Madam President. Angel, if you could pop open the presentation, would be great. Yeah, I can start right there. Thanks, Angel. Okay, so, so this is the second in a series of five public budget presentations leading up to final budget adoption in June. The focus of tonight's presentation will be to provide a general overview of projected revenues, expenditures, and the associated budget shortfall for the 2021-22 budget as of today, January 19th, 2021. We're still very early in the budget development process and still about five months to go until final budget adoption. And the first phase of the process, which just completed, really just focused on an initial review of our priorities and needs for next year and identifying any potential new revenue sources and expenditure obligations for the coming year. Much, much more time will be spent going forward in the next several months, reviewing in detail every line item in the budget, establishing our two priorities, identifying areas for reduction, spend a lot of time reallocating resources and verifying the accuracy of the projected costs and revenue sources, and as always, working towards minimizing the financial impact on the community. We're also going to start by spending a little time this evening looking at the financial impact that COVID-19 has had and will continue to have on our school district. In addition to the educational impact the COVID's had on our students, which has been a focus of much of our discussion, you know, I've been asked various times by taxpayers and the community, staff board members over the past several months, you know, what impact is COVID-19 and remote learning having on our district financially? And how much extra are we spending and or how much extra are we saving? And how much will be the over budget or under budget at year end? There's been a lot of questions in that area, and I've repeatedly said, you know, we're very much, as everyone knows, in uncharted territory with limited history of how school district revenues and expenditures would be affected in both the hybrid and remote learning environment, the short and the long term. So really, there's, there's no accurate way to predict what our budget, the actual revenues and expenditures will be until the end of the year. However, we can take a look at some of the financial impacts that we've experienced since March 2020. I also think it's really important to note and understand that although we did realize some limited cost savings during the shutdown towards the end of 2019-20 school year in areas such as fuel, select contracted services, supplies, utilities, security, travel, and those type of areas, and continue to realize those savings during the period we were fully remote. Now approximately 85% of our budget is allocated for what would be considered ongoing fixed costs. So throughout this time, you know, we had salary and benefit costs for teachers, assistants, administrators, and select support personnel, which I think everyone knows, continue to pay debt service, copier and technology leases, tuition to private schools and charter schools, all of our property and liability insurance and costs like that, continued, we continue to experience those costs. So in addition to some of the savings we realized on the expenditure side of the budget, was offset by increases in certain areas of the budget, such as charter school tuition. We'll talk a little bit about that, more about that in a minute. Unemployment costs, cleaning and disinfecting supplies, technology, equipment, software, et cetera. But I think if you look at the, look overall, the total expenditures, say last, last year pre-COVID, during the period, say July 1st to December 31st, 2019, it's pretty close on a percentage basis to what we've spent, you know, this year from July 1st through December 31st, 2020. Last year, we spent about 42.32% of the budget, and then this year about 42.69% of the budget. So fairly consistent both years. So on the revenue side of the budget, we talked about some concern that we had last year that we've seen notable reductions in real estate tax collections, transfer and interim tax, earned income tax, state subsidies, et cetera. But all those have held up very well and have been consistent with, with normal year collections and our budget projections. So we've been fortunate in those areas. As expected, though, we have realized some significant reductions in investment earnings as interest rates are at all-time lows. Our before and after care program revenues have been, you know, non-existent for the most part, and the, some of the monies that we would normally receive with facilities used and student activities, obviously, we haven't realized those either. But I do think, I do think it is important that we, that we need to be conscious of, of those potential long-term impacts for the future, that the pandemic will have on the district financially or could have financially. Couple of examples, we're, we're starting to see some of our big commercial businesses that are on large office spaces file for appeals, which is understandable when capacities are lower. One of the concerns that we do have, you know, long-term is that, you know, businesses have been forced to operate more remotely with their staff and stay remote. And, you know, as a cost-saving strategy, which, which, as businesses get used to that, the demand for office space may be lower going forward. So we have to keep an eye on that. You know, we've also seen our enrollment drop, which negatively affects our average daily membership numbers, which impacts our future state subsidies, subsidy formula. Very hopeful that that trend will reverse and things will go back, you know, a little bit to more normal once the educational program returns to the norm. Gambling revenues are another area. We do have some concern because that provides homeowners, qualified homeowners every year with the, it has in the past with fairly consistent tax reductions over the past several years, which may or may not be there next year and the following year due to some of the extended shutdowns of casinos during the pandemic. So these are just a few areas that, again, we, we need to be concerned about and keep an eye on going forward, you know, long-term. So with all that, with all that said, I did want to share just some, some specific information with regards to our expenditures related to COVID stuff. If, Angel, you can get the next slide, great. So if we take a look, you kind of broke these expenditures down by technology, PPE, building modifications, and some other areas, salary, professional services, overtime, unemployment, et cetera. And we broke the costs down by last year fiscal year, March through June 2020, and then for this year, the fiscal year this year, July through December. So this is a sum total, and really what you want to take a look at is that bottom-line figure, $1.9 million. These are additional costs that we've experienced directly related to COVID. So that's, that's the bad news, I would say. But on the good news front, and if you want to go to the next slide, Angel. This, these are the funds that, that we've been able to receive and secure through various grants, federal grants. So broken out different areas, but the real important number to look at is the bottom line here, so we'll be receiving about $1.5 million. So it's a pretty good offset to what we had to put out so far with COVID expenditures. And also on the positive side, we did get word that the, the SRT2 funds, as they're called, our allocation should be about $1.4 million going forward. So we should be in good shape as far as, you know, our needs throughout the pandemic. So if we turn our attention to next year's budget, if you want to go to the next slide, Angel. Again, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are in the very early stages of the development process with a lot of detailed review and analysis still to be completed. And I would also tell you that developing accurate projections for next year's budget is going to be a little bit more challenging than previous years, as we would normally review what was spent so far in current and previous school years in the budget. But unfortunately, some of the historical data will not be as useful in planning because it's just been different this year. Some of the areas, supply areas, fuel, copy paper, things like that, which we have supplies on hand, we're not going to need to budget for next year in large part because we do have built-up inventories. But when we budget, we have to be conscious about taking it out of the budget in one year and then having to load it back in the following year. So that's something we're going to be working on throughout the process. But as you can see right now, our overall expenditures are projected to increase about $3.7 million year-over-year. If you break that down departmentally, it'll give you a little bit better feel for where those increases are. I'll talk a little bit about that in detail on the next slide. So if you look at our elementary school budgets, right now, we have a projected decrease of about $44,000. Again, we have to look very closely at this. A lot of that decrease is related to supplies on hand. We actually, we actually may put in some contingency lines to keep, keep money in the budget, not actually spend it, but have it roll over to the fund balance for the following year. So that's something we have to continue to work on. Secondary schools, a small decrease at this point. If we look at the business office, you see we're projecting an overall decrease of $134,000. This includes in this area, the budget, the charter school tuition increases of now $440,000. Since then, that's, that's what we're faced with right now. That's our projections if, if enrollment stayed where they are this year, be another $440,000. And since the pandemic started, we've seen a spike in charter school attendance. There's been 39 additional students. However, this number was higher. We've actually had six students return to Haverhill. And this is one area, obviously, we're going to be monitoring very closely, especially as we move back to a, you know, a more, you know, normal full-time educational program at some point. And we're also going to be looking for strategy, strategies to bring some of these students back to Haverhill. Some other reductions that right now are budgeted for in the business office include our Eastern Center tuition, which we'll be approving that budget tonight. There's a projected decrease there, some decreases in consulting services and printing costs. There's also a, I think it was about a $329,000 budgeted expenditure for CARES grant, COVID expenditures, that's offset on the revenue side. So essentially, but the expense and revenue have been eliminated from the budget for next year, so it contributes to the decrease. And as I just pointed out, however, we do expect to receive additional funds, and as those funds are more confirmed and we know where we're going to expend those dollars, we'll do a budget supplement to, to get those dollars in on the revenue side and also the expenditure side of the budget. So if you look at the curriculum area, projecting a decrease, about $38,000. The curriculum budgets, that consists of the assistant superintendent budget, curriculum, K to 12, and federal and state programs. And this, this decrease right now is really just related to some of the decreases in the federal title programs, which again, have something to do with, with carryover dollars year-over-year. And, but it's, it's offset by decreases also on the revenue side. So whatever we receive in title funds on the revenue side, it matches up equally with the expenditure side of the budget. The technology and operations budget, although we're not showing any projected increase or decrease in these areas at this point in time, there's still a lot of work to do, especially in the operations budget. We do quite a bit of recalculating, reallocating costs in a number of different areas. And again, although we don't expect an increase or decrease, we have to, there's going to be a lot of dollars that are moving around in these areas. As far as the HR budget is concerned, which normally does make up the lion's share of the overall budget increase. These increases that are projected are primarily related to contractual professional staff staff movement increases and wage increases for administrative and support personnel. There's also right now approximately $345,000 in new personnel costs that are in the budget. And it's at this preliminary stage. Some of the new positions right now include an autistic support teacher at the high school, a life schools teacher at the elementary school, an additional assistant principal at the high school, part-time ESL teacher, added nursing support services, and added tech support staff position, and added job coach for the transition program, and some added special needs support. And again, this is very preliminary. There's a lot of significant time and effort's going to be put into reviewing and analyzing our needs over the next several months. And only those positions that are absolutely necessary will ultimately be recommended for approval. Also, as part of the HR budget, the medical area, which is always a big ticket item in the budget, we've not made any adjustments to our, to medical costs to date. We're only about four months into the plan year. So we normally wait about six months before making projections for the upcoming year. This is, this area is another example of what I consider a little bit of challenge in the area in the budget, just because it's a little bit out of the norm as I would look at it. You know, we're running, right now, we're running under budget, as we did last year, partly due to COVID and less people going to the doctor. And some of the concern is that people aren't going to the doctor right now for preventative care and treatments that they may need, which ultimately could result in higher costing medical costs going forward. So another area that we got to keep an eye on, but for right now, we are running under, under budget. Also included in the HR increases, increases in social security and retirement costs. Those costs amount to about $1.1 million on the expenditure side. That's offset by half, about $550,000 on the revenue side, as the state contributes half to our overall costs for social security and retirement. And on the plus side, though, the Peasars contribution rate, which in years past, you know, we've seen some significant increases in the retirement contribution rate for employers, that's only increasing from 34.51% of payroll to 34.91%. So it's not, not a huge increase, but, but always a significant increase when you're talking the amount of dollars in the budget that it applies to. Looking at security quickly, projecting an overall decrease of about $12,000. This includes a reduction of about $12,000 in Alice's training costs, reduction of about $45,000 in PCCD grant funding that's not available next year as it was for this year. So there was also a subsequent increase of about $40,000 for the high school SRO officer. Again, we, we were able to pick up some of those costs with a grant in previous years, but not next year. And we're also projecting some small increases in security software and licensing. Superintendent's budget is, is right now stable. It's even, Dr. Evans Lodge is even looking at making reductions, so we have to compliment him for that. Special services, right now, we're projecting an increase of about $450,000, $400,000. Of this is attributed to age of beginner service costs. As we've discussed in the past, the age of beginner children, students that are currently in the MCIU early intervention program that are age-eligible to come to the district next year, right now, there's 34 children in that program that could potentially come to the district next year, and the current service costs for those children are right around $400,000. If we go to the technology area of the budget, we're currently projecting an increase of about $225,000. This just includes some increases for our SecureWare services to help protect the district from cyber attacks, which has continued to rise. There's about $27,000 increase for upgrade from our VMware servers and $41,000 increase for enhanced module for managing our Shepherd Desk and tracking assets. This also includes right now a $1,000 increase for miscellaneous equipment needs and leases, which are not really identified to date. And as we go through the budget process over the next five months, this is something that we'll look to reallocate and reduce, hopefully, into some other areas. And lastly, transportation increases of about $93,000. $75,000 of that is, is related directly to McKinney-Vento homeless student transportation increases, which we continue to see. We also factored in a driver rate increase, and we're able to reduce some of our fuel costs by about $17,000. So, so of all that's, that's just a quick overview with a limited amount of detail that gives you an idea of what makes up that $3.7 million increase. So if you look overall, Angel, to the next slide, just a quick pie chart that kind of just shows you that, you know, our overall budget, you know, 74% of the budget is really related to salary and benefits. Here, debt services amounts about 5%, and then everything else in the budget departmentally and curriculum-wise is, and operations-wise about 21%. Okay, so if we can jump over to the next slide, looking at projected revenues as of today, January 19th, you'll see an overall projected increase of $767,000. This is before factoring in any type of tax increase. So if we break that down a little bit further into local, state, and federal revenues on the next slide. As far as the local revenues are concerned, the overall projected increase right now, about $867,000 is, is due to real estate tax increases in our tax base, not only factors in some of the assessment appeals, some of which we discussed this evening, but it also factors in some of the increases we've seen in our tax base, in large part due to the Haverhill Center for Jewish Life, which became a for-profit company that came on our books for the coming year. Also, in the local area, this earned income, we projected an increase of almost $700,000. Last year, we, we stayed very conservative and reduced that area with concerns about some of those dollars shrinking. That's been relatively stable as noted, so we're going to be adding some of those dollars back into the budget going forward. Earnings on investment, as noted earlier, that's been a drain. Last year, we were able to maintain, or this current year, we were able to maintain some of that because of the, some of the investments we made that were a little longer term with higher interest rates, but those have since gone or since matured. And right now, we're, we're making very little in our investments as we're constricted, you know, by, by the school code. So there's a reduction there of about $275,000, and we've also reduced some of the revenues from our before and after gear program as even going forward. You don't see that producing the same level of, of revenues as it did in the past. As far as the state sources are concerned, that increase is driven in large part by the offset, the social security and your retirement contribution dollars that the, the state normally provides. And there's also some reductions, there was a $150,000 reduction in safety and PCCD grants that we received last year that we'll no longer receive going forward. Right now, on the state side too, we kept the basic ed and special and transportation subsidy revenues at the current levels as we budget this year. We'll know more in early February when the government presents a state budget, what our allocations may be. We'll update these numbers in a future presentation. As far as the federal revenues are concerned, as I noted earlier, there's about a $329,000 decrease in CARES grant funding that we had budgeted on the revenue side and the expenditure side, since took that out. So that really is a lion's share of that decrease. Also, right now, consistent with what we've done previously, is to use about $3 million of fund balance to help balance the budget, and also about $1.25 million of our Peasars reserve funds if needed to balance the budget. In both areas, we have sufficient funds to do that. So that's what goes into the makeup of the overall $767,000 projected increase. And again, before, before any tax increases are factored in. So if we go to the next slide, to a quick look at the shortfall, where it stands right now, if you look at our overall expenditure increase of 3.7, combined with our projected revenue increase, leaves us with a shortfall of about $2.9 million. If we were to factor in the Act 1 index allowance, which is 3% for next year, that would generate about $2.2 million, which would leave us with a shortfall of about $729,000. I will tell you that at this point in the budget development process, we're in very good shape. There's still a long way to go. There's still a lot of work to be done, and we'll see some of these costs reduced and some of the revenues enhanced over the next five months. So I think come final adoption, tentative adoption in May, final adoption in June, we should be in relatively good shape. So I think that is, you know, the next slide, that leaves with just questions, if there is any. So that's, again, just a quick overview, quick enough, and we'll have several more budget updates along the way, but that's where we stand at this point. We'll have several more budget updates along the way, but so we stand at this point.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, so this is the time for the public to offer their comments on any agenda items only. And then members of the public wishing to make a comment during this board meeting can connect virtually through Zoom or you can call in. If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand. You can do that by. Clicking the raise hand button in Zoom or by hitting star nine on your phone. That's going to alert the meeting host that you wish to speak. And when it is your turn, you will change to a speaking role and prompted on the call that it is your turn. Speaking is limited to three minutes and when your time is expired, we return to a normal meeting participant. Please make sure you state your name, address and municipality of residence. And again, limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. As of right now, I do not see any hands raised in Zoom for questions or for comment, excuse me.
Okay, so let's move then to the approval of the minutes. From the December second special action meeting and the December seventh reorganization meeting. And the December seventh legislative action meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Yeah, this is DJ Schultz. So move, please.
And this is Teresa Brown, I second.
Is there any discussion around those eight minutes? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so let's move to our consent agenda items. Item A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, N, J.
David Brown, make a motion to approve.
Very second.
Any discussion around any of those items? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now we are going to move to the revised twenty twenty, twenty twenty one health and safety plan. The health and safety plan had been revised to add some new language, language based on the new guidance from the state. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the new plan.
I make a motion, Teresa Brown, to approve your plan.
I'll second it, Susan Hunsinger Hall.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so human resources action items, item A, B, C, and D.
David Brown, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, Susan Hunsinger Hall.
Any discussion around the human resources action items? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Special services, item A. Looking for a motion for approval of item A in special services.
This is DJ, I make that motion, please.
Teresa Brown, second.
Any discussion on the, that item? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Business office action items. So we have item A, B, C, D, E, N, F.
I make a motion that we approve, Teresa Brown.
DJ Schultz, I'll second that.
Any discussion on those items?
Tara Connor Halston, I will not be approving to go forward with the rebuilding for anything for Keith Valley. I don't think we should do it without reopening the school first.
Any other discussion? So do you want us to vote on that item separately, Tara? Those items.
Yes, please.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve items A, B, E, and F in business office action items.
This is DJ, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor of item A, B, E, and F, please say aye. Any opposed? So now we are looking at items C and D. Under business office action items.
Make a motion to approve, it's David Brown.
I'll second it, Susan Hunsinger Hall.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Myself opposed, Tara Connor Halston.
Hey, so now we are going to move to the committee reports. First, we have Ms. Hesimer Hoff for the curriculum committee.
Yes, the curriculum committee met last Tuesday, January twelfth. Dr. Bates provided an overview of the ELA and social studies curriculum review. The decision was made to review simultaneously the English language arts and the social studies curriculum. Instead of following the original plan of just doing ELA this year and social studies later. Dr. Alicia D spoke of the focus of the review, mainly the four elements being student achievement. Deeper learning, equity and cultural proficiency. This year is the visioning year with much work already begun. The board can expect regular updates starting in March with the year end report in the summer. The other item that was discussed was the course selection guide. Which is usually reported to the curriculum committee in December. It typically includes new and dropped courses for approval. However, with all the challenges this year, no new courses are being added. At this point, the course selection guide is currently being circulated.
And is that something that we need to approve, the course selection guide?
I don't think so. Dr. Taylor or Dr. Evans log?
My understanding is that yes, it's approved annually.
Okay, so we will need to vote on the course selection guide then. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the course selection guide for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
I move to approve it.
And I second Teresa Brown.
Any discussion on the course selection guide? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Facilities committee report, Eric is not here. Did you have anything to report for that, Mr. Rickert?
No, other than the minutes for the last meeting are included in board docs.
Okay. Now we move to the finance committee report, Ms. McCouch.
I have nothing further to add unless Bob you do. Your great presentation.
Human resources committee, Mr. Brown.
No report at this time.
And policy committee, Ms. Schultz.
You're muted, DJ.
Thank you, so sorry. We met earlier as the policy meeting earlier this month on the sixth and went over a few things. We do have some action items we need to take today. We're asking for a first reading on two policies. The classroom policy, which we actually discussed probably about a year ago. When we were talking about the grading changes and that was approved a while ago. This is the Klinkerick link policy and again, it's attached. And it. Summarize, summarizing it, it eliminates the, I'm going to say the public facing class rank. Policy because it really doesn't help with our students in the secondary education and. Principal Williams gave a presentation on this at our last meeting at the policy meeting and actually in the board, in our board meeting, I want to say last February. And the other policy we're asking for our first reading is the crowdfunding policy. And I'm going to actually ask Ms. Johnson Northman to, to review that and why we need it and. And what that's all about.
Sure, so crowdfunding has become a popular method for raising funds. We see it a lot as like the GoFundMe, but there's other websites that do the same thing. This is a policy that has come up in a number of school districts now with the rise of crowdfunding. So if a member of the. Teaching staff or anyone else in, in Hepper Horsham wishes to do crowdfunding. This is the policy to show how they can get approval to do that. Because we, it's important for the district to make sure that we know what's going on in the classrooms and in the buildings. And there is a, a process for people to be able to follow now.
So, Madam President, can we ask for a motion to accept these as first read?
Yes, so we're looking for a motion to accept policy two fourteen and policy three fifty five on a first reading basis. Sorry, we have a second reading.
Tara Connor Halston, motion.
Teresa Brown, second.
Any discussion around these policies? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Let's move to.
Oh, can I give a, I just wanted to review a little bit more. Some other work that we're doing on the policy committee is some investigation into possibly adding. An AR to our homework policy right now. We've heard a lot from. Especially now in the online learning environment, how, how long the kids are doing homework, how long they're on screens, especially the young kids. And we really want to make sure that any homework that is, is being given is relevant and. Adds to the learning. And we also want to make sure there's not too much screen time. So there's a lot of invest, a lot of work going on with that. Dr. King or Dr. Evans log, is there anything you want to add to that?
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. We have some, a work that Dr. King will be leading. With our educational leaders in the district and, and a group of teachers over the next several months. About some work around my foundations for the homework policy revisions that we believe will provide some greater guidance. For our staff and be more result in, in improvement in the homework experience that supports learning for our students.
Thank you. And the last thing I want to report on from the policy is our continuing work on the equity policy and action, an action plan. I'm going to actually ask Dr. Taylor. If now's a great time to talk about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just signed an agreement or we will be signing an agreement, bringing forth an agreement this evening for a customized training. Partnership with the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, otherwise known as PSBA. Under the leadership of Dr. Heather Bennett and Dade Lynn Smeltzer. They will be guiding us with the conversations around an equity policy. And also helping us to take a look at our current policies and practices. So that we can, as a district, begin to take steps in developing an equity policy. Dr. Bennett and Ms. Smeltzer will facilitate critical conversations around system wide equity. And share profiles and exemplars of districts that have successfully implemented these policies with fidelity. In the development of our equity plan, Dr. Bennett and Ms. Smeltzer will conduct surveys. They will guide discussions with the board. And the committee based on best practices, practical recommendations and actionable strategies of system wide equity integration. Once the stakeholders have a clear understanding of the actions required by the district leadership team. As they introduce an equity mindset across the district. A Dr. Bennett and Ms. Smeltzer will help us to develop a policy that will integrate these things systematically. And so we will be looking to complete this work in the spring and then bringing forth a district policy to obtain feedback from our stakeholders. Prior to adopt, adoption. Madam Chair, that ends my report.
Thank you so much. Are there any other, any questions on any of the policy topics? Awesome. And our next policy meeting is the first Wednesday of February, which is the third. Thank you, Madam President.
So now we'll move on to our liaison reports. So ECAT, Ms. Connor Halston.
DJ attended the last meeting in my place, so I'm going to hand it over to DJ and to again DJ.
Thank you for allowing me to, to attend in your place. That was, it was a. A productive meeting at the JOC in the Eastern Center and all the boards should have gotten and. A board summary and thank you Tara for sending that out. There are a couple of things I wanted to highlight that happened. First, the construction program was honored by the Upper Morland Police Department. The construction department at Eastern worked together with, I think, a couple. A few community businesses and the department to build a training course for their police canines. And they are unfortunately not able to have a ribbon cutting as they usually would because of the. Regulations on crowd restrictions, but we wanted to congratulate them and what a wonderful job you did there. And the other exciting thing that happened at the JOC was that we approved. To move forward with phase two of the capital plan project. So they, I hired the architects and contractors, I believe. To do the proposed renovations on the automotive. Sections, the nurses suite and. And I think some other spaces like the administration of office and actually I think this is going to allow to perhaps. Not only improve the programs that are, that are in place now, but make room for a couple more possibly. So that's exciting. And that's my report. Thank you so much.
And it looks like we also have to approve the budget. For the Eastern Center. So Angela, pull that up on the screen for us.
Thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the budget for the Eastern Center.
This is DJ, I'll make that motion.
Tara, I second it.
Any discussion around that? All of those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Now we move on to federal reports, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. We have just been notified as Mr. Rickert spoke about earlier. We will be anticipating the receipt of some additional federal funds that we hope that we will be able to. Use to address some of the circumstances and conditions that are refused from educational practices during the pandemic. So once we have those funds, we will be able to allocate them accordingly. And we have received literature about it, but we have not received the funding yet. So there will be some plans in place in that regard. And that ends my update, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. And CIU, that is me. There was new December meeting. Our next meeting for the MCIU is on January twenty seventh. PSBA report, Mrs. Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. The, just to let you know that at some point, we were meeting twice a week. And we are now meeting once a week. I just wanted to tell you that. and we are now meeting once a week. Uh, I just wanted to tell you that. And PSBA is offering an all-school director monthly exchange. Uh, it will be held via Zoom meeting at twelve thirty every Thursday, Thursday of the month, January through June. Geographic-based breakout rooms will be utilized to allow for discussions amongst school directors in the same regions of the state. And I will include those meetings. The first meeting is actually January twenty-first uh, at twelve thirty. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Uh, Superintendent's report, Dr. Evans.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I actually have seven items that I'm going to discuss, so I apologize for the length of this report, but just wanted to update the board and community on, on a few items. I'll start with kudos for the many holiday service programs that occurred in our schools over the, the winter holidays uh, to support our families and communities. When I had conversations with staff members who have sponsored these events in the past, to a T, they've all said, how can we make this work despite the conditions? Uh, which is so important to have that type of, that type of spirit. So especially now with the difficulties that families are enduring. We have a lot to be, lot to be proud of and thankful for, uh, from the, the high school student councils feed a friend program to the holiday gift giving programs uh, for our students at the elementary schools or other drives at the elementary schools. Uh, KV offered a drive-through gift pickup for families. Um, just a big thank you to the students and staff who volunteered to make this year's holidays uh, bright, a bit brighter for our families. Last week, January eleventh, we saw the return of in-person instruction. Um, so so big thanks to our, our teachers, our staff, our families and students for making a, a successful first, uh, first week back. Our grades one to twelve hybrid program and our five-day kindergarten program returned in person successfully. Uh, while the county remains in its current status of transmission, we're obligated to follow the Pennsylvania Department of Education and Department of Health guidelines for monitoring case counts and remaining open. Uh, so we are monitoring quarantines and case counts daily as well as our student attendance daily and reporting um, much of that information on the dashboard on the website. Those cases and quarantines are reported and updated every day at four o'clock PM. And I'm pleased to report that all buildings have been able to remain open uh, for our first week. Uh, quarantine numbers for staff were in the range of around twenty uh, per day. Last week, we currently have fifteen staff members and sixty-one students who are uh, quarantining. Um, and the number of positive cases have remained low. Obviously, we aspire for that number to be zero. Uh, but we have had two confirmed cases of those that are in person. Um, and no more than one in each building, one at KV and one at the high school. Um, and through this, attendance has been very high for the in-person instruction. So um, in the ninety, ninety, mid-ninety percent uh, range of student attendance. So we're pleased with the attendance rates uh, for return to in-person instruction. I also wanted to share that there'll be some minor revisions to the elementary model for the hybrid that will be communicated this week uh, to our school communities. Change is really um, centered around the Monday, uh, the Monday structure for the day. There'll still be um, opportunities for synchronous time, um, specials and multiple opportunities for students to connect with supports. Uh, but there have been changes to the way the Monday schedule will look. Um, we've been looking for ways for um, to, to schedule staff uh, in a creative way that provide additional synchronous time for individuals and small groups of students who may need some additional support during that Monday day. So there's some adjustments to the schedule that will reflect that. Um, but those adjustments will provide families with more streamlined times for synchronous connection throughout the day and more flexibility in completing activities and assignments. So this change will uh, also respond to some concerns about students having uh, too much screen time during the remote learning day. So this will be explained from, in communication from our, from our principals with our elementary families and in the um, elementary learning hybrid guide that we have posted um, online. Uh, moving on to some, some health uh, updates. Um, pleased to report that, uh, Happer Horsham is one of only three school districts in the area that will be um, starting our rapid antigen testing or assurance testing program for our staff. Uh, that begins this week. We offered a pilot uh, last week. There will be uh, additional districts in the area jumping on board with the program, but we are the third to get it up and running. Um, this allows for staff to have multiple opportunities throughout the week to be um, tested. It's an, it's an um, asympt, for asymptomatic staff members who go through a rapid fifteen-minute test. Um, if the test were to return a positive, they'd follow up with a PCR test uh, to confirm. Uh, but the advantage of having the rapid testing is to provide early identification of asymptomatic carriers. So one of the concerns with the spread of the virus is people are unbeknownst to them spreading the virus uh, because they're not symptomatic. So the rapid antigen testing would be one way to help um, staff identify if uh, if they were carrying um, and then follow up to assure that that spread was not brought into the community and school. So this is a a uh, community mitigation strategy that's been highly recommended uh, by CHOP and the Office of Public Health and uh, we are, uh, again, one of the few that are adopting it. So I wanted to provide an update on uh, the vaccine. Uh, and I just want to couch this by saying that um, you know, this obviously is not my area of expertise. I'm sharing information that I'm getting uh, on a regular basis. Um, we get updates multiple times a week uh, from the county on the status of the vaccine and the status of the vaccination. So I wanted to pass that information along. Uh, I will say that over the last uh, few weeks, the information has uh, fluctuated regularly. Uh, so we've gotten some um, some really good news and then some, some news that's not so good. Um, so I just wanted to give you a, a, a picture of where we are um, with the vaccine. Um, so with the updates that we get from the county, um, we also get updates for suggested timeline for when um, our staff would possibly be vaccinated. Um, the county is still in the one A phase of vaccinations, uh, which initially was a relatively small group that included like frontline healthcare workers, um, EMTs, hospital workers, of course. Um, and then that one A group has since been expanded a couple of times. Uh, last week, the one A group was expanded and that expansion uh, brought us some good news because it included some information that allowed our staff members uh, who work regularly, more physically, uh, closely with students to include our, some special education teachers, life skills, autistic support, are some of our one-to-one instructional assistants, some of our clinical staff were included in the one A phase. Um, and that expansion allowed some of uh, additional, some of our staff members to uh, begin the vaccination process, uh, which was good news. Today, we received um, information that there was another expansion to the phase one A. Um, that information accro, uh, included a much broader expansion of one A. Um, so originally one A uh, had around six thousand people in the county that needed to be vaccinated. The expansion of one A um, adds about another hundred sixty to hundred seventy thousand people in the county that need to be vaccinated in one A. Uh, that includes individuals, um, you know, regardless of what, what their occupation may be uh, or if retired sixty-five or older, um, all individuals sixty-five or older can be vaccinated. And those uh, who are aged sixteen to sixty-five with certain uh, medical conditions are able to be vaccinated. Um, so that's a pretty expansive list. This addition and expansion of one A, uh, in essence, um, delayed the vaccination of most of our staff. Uh, most of our staff is in one B. Um, so I, you know, I don't want to, um, obviously it's, it's, it's the better, the best interest of the entire community that individuals are vaccinated as quickly as possible. Um, so we want that to happen uh, for across, across the community. Um, you know, selfishly speaking, obviously we want our staff to be vaccinated so that um, so that um, we can, we can, uh, of course, um, uh, continue to provide as, as much in-person instruction as possible uh, for, for our staff. So we do not have, uh, uh, for our students, excuse me, we do not have a timeline of when the one B vaccinations will begin. As of now, uh, we did have a tentative timeline uh, last week that has been adjusted. So uh, you know, as we get that timeline, we will sure, certainly share that information. Um, clearly the speed and the efficiency of the vacs, vaccine uh, is a factor um, for not only community safety but for determining the reopen of many things in society, including schools. So, you know, uh, just wanted to caution uh, everyone that, you know, vacsi, vaccine vaccination completion is not the sole metric to be considered for the opening. And that is um, because of the guidance that we are receiving from CDC and Office of Public Health uh, regarding this area. Um, and the, the current guidance and the concern is that uh, we do not know yet whether the, the vaccine will prevent individuals from spreading the virus that causes COVID nineteen for other people. So even if, uh, even if someone is uh, vaccinated, they may be able to carry the virus. Um, even if they're not, even if they don't get sick. Um, so wi, with that uncertainty, um, the guidance around the mitigation strategies has not changed for those who are vaccinated or not vaccinated. So what that means is even if someone is vaccinated currently, that means that they are uh, required to still follow any travel quarantines and exposure quarantine protocols. Um, even if they've been vaccinated once or twice. Um, so again, that's guidance with several uncertainties. Um, we, I say we, the medical experts are learning more and more about the virus weekly, um, regularly. So information may come out um, hopefully more. That's um, um, that's more, a little more promising. But there are, you know, several uncertainties that we hope to learn more about in their future. Uh, you know, we want to learn more about the vaccine and its effectiveness, especially regarding the new strain. Uh, we have some information about that, but we want to know more about that. Um, and there's uncertainty, of course, that the vaccine can carry, if those who are vaccinated can carry or transmit the virus. And there's also still a lack of understanding and clear timeline for the vaccination of children uh, under sixteen. So there's a lot of information that we still do not know. Um, what we do hear over and over again is that there is confidence that the vaccine should be pursued and that um, it is really important that um, that um, staff members, students, community members are vaccinated a, as quickly as possible. So we do hear overwhelming evidence that that, that is the case. So we hope that the vaccine hesitancy that's occurring um, societally uh, will diminish and that people will um, agree, get opportunities to be uh, vaccinated. So um, again, that was a lot of, a lot of public health information um, to share. So there are two other items in my report. Um, so again, apologize for the length of the report. I did want to mention that um, on the board agenda this evening, uh, the board accepted um, the retirement of our Director of Business Affairs, uh, Mr. Bob Reichert effective um, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we will certainly have the opportunity down the line to appropriately honor Bob. Uh, but I'd be remiss if not taking a moment to thank Mr. Reichert for his tremendous service to the district. Most business managers are known primarily for their uh, their fiscal management and their acumen around money. Uh, I can say, say with certainty that Bob's legacy goes far beyond this. Um, his fiscal management has not only been exemplary, but his leadership and his impact on the people of the school district and the people of our community has been uh, nothing short of amazing. So Bob, uh, we wish you well in your retirement. Uh, unfortunately, the Bob did, the, the, the board did approve the vote, um, approving your retirement, but uh, we wish you the best and we know that you, and please know that you'll be tremendously missed. And um, finally, this evening, I wanted to share with the board and the community that January is Board Member Appreciation Month. And um, that allows me to, some time at tonight's meeting, just to highlight the valuable contributions of our school board directors who volunteer their time and leadership to serve all the residents of Happer Horsham School District, but especially uh, their service to our children. Uh, we're fortunate to have school directors who are committed to quality public education. By devoting countless hours each month to school business, they ensure that they're informed to support the children of the district so they can, so our students can receive the finest public education possible. Our school board members take the time to understand the issues, the opportunities and the challenges that we face as a district. The time they spend on district business is time they could devote to their families or other personal and professional obligations. Instead, the sacrifices they make and the leadership they provide help our community remain a desirable destination for people of all ages, ages who want a high quality of life. So on behalf of the entire Happer Horsham community, we'd like to recognize each of our school directors and thank you for all you do. Yours is a difficult and often thankless job. It's important that you know that we are deeply grateful for all that you do. And our link crew uh, from the high school has prepared um, nice boxes of appreciation uh, for each of the board members um, that were we in person, we would hand you those boxes, but those are boxes are currently at the uh, at the District Administration Building. If you stop by, you can pick it up. If not, we'll find a way to make sure that you get, uh, you get your boxes of appreciation. But we are very grateful for, for all that you do. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And does that include your report, Dr.?
It does include my lengthy report, yes.
Uh, so now we move to our second public comment section. Uh, this is the time for any members of the public uh, to make a comment on anything. It doesn't have to be an item on the agenda. Um, if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment, uh, you can raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button in Zoom or by clicking star nine on your phone. That's going to alert the meeting host that you wish to speak. Uh, when it is your turn, you will be changed to a speaking role and prompted on the call that it is your turn. Speaking is limited to three minutes and when your time is expired, you will be returned uh, to a normal participant. Um, please state your name, address and municipality of residence uh, prior to making your comment. Is there anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Yes, Madam President, our first uh, public comment is Mary Wheeler. Give it just one second. Okay, you can go ahead, Mary, and unmute and speak.
Thank you. Um, there were two items approved tonight and I don't see the supporting documentation for them. That is for the Schrader Group and the, I'm not sure how to say it, D H U Y agreements. Will they be made um, available for public scrutiny?
You can certainly request them and there's a right to know request.
Were they made available to the school board before they approved them?
Yes.
Okay, I'll submit my right to know request tonight. Thank you.
Okay. And that is all I see for public comment.
Okay. And one last item, are there any additional comments from any board members or the superintendent?
I have a quick question. Sorry. Um, and this is for Dr. Evans. Thank you so much for that very thorough report. It wasn't, it wasn't too long. It was appropriate and I do want to thank um, our, our business director for his service as well. But uh, we, we were talking about the Monday structure for the elementary schools and I do appreciate you addressing that. Um, is there any more clarity? Because I know that there's been some rumors around there, oh, we're getting rid of the virtual day and that's going to be bad and I'm not going to have any um, you know, that one-on-one with the t, or at least the class with the teacher. So can, can you give a little bit more i- in advance of what the principal's going to share, principals are going to share?
Um, I, I can. I, I guess, um, I, I could, can I ask Dr. King if you can, if you can chime in, Dr. King, just about some of the, some of the details? But um, we're not getting rid of the, we're not getting rid of, of the virtual day. We are certainly having opportunities for students to connect multiple times with, with staff and adult, and adults in the building. Dr. King?
Yeah, sure. So, so what we're looking at doing is um, just limiting the synchronous, long synchronous blocks of time. There'll be a block of time in the morning, um, where the classroom teacher, they'll still have their morning meeting as they have scheduled. And then there'll be an instructional block of time where the teachers will um, set the children up for the activities that they're going to do for the classes that they would typically have in the morning time. Students then will do those um, activities uh, independently. And then for the rest of the morning, if they have specials, they'll still have their specials. They have some scheduled time, different students. They have some scheduled time. Different students have supports. Those will still occur. There'll be a synchronous library time still on Monday. And then we'll still keep the, um, lunchtime that everyone has off, children in grade one through five have at the same time. After the lunch period, there'll be then a second instructional block that the classroom teacher will get on with his or her class. They'll, um, provide them some instruction for their afternoon classes, set them up for the activities that they'll be doing independently. And then students will be able to do those, um, things independently without just, you know, elongated blocks of synchronous time in the afternoon. So just really trying to streamline the synchronous time. Some of what we were hearing from families was to stay on synchronously throughout the entire day for very long periods of time was somewhat challenging. So, so we're really just trying to address some of that. And we'll monitor that as we go, um, get feedback from families and make any adjustments we need to.
Does it sound like it's more, um, not asynchronous, but it's time without the teacher?
Yeah, I mean, there will be. So that, so the time that the, so, you know, part of the challenge is for those long synchronous block, you know, children only have a certain amount of attention, um, that they can give to the screen. It's hard enough when the children are in a classroom with the teacher. It's even more difficult when they're on the other side of a screen. So, um, we do, it, it will be less live synchronous time with the teacher. The students will be doing independent activities. We certainly want those activities, though, to be engaging. It might, they might be watching a video on the lesson, the new unit that they're starting that week and may have to respond to some questions. So we were wanting those activities that the students to be doing still engaging and ones that they can do independently. They just won't be a long block of synchronous time, which quite honestly, they aren't always anyway. You know, it's not like the first graders get on and have an hour and a half ELA block where they are talking with the teacher for that entire period of time.
Okay, um, and that's just for the Mondays.
Correct.
Day.
Correct.
Um, do you perhaps see this kind of attention given to, um, in the future when the cohorts are at home?
I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking me to get. I think, yeah, I think like you, when the cohort is at home, what we've been, um, the teachers have been working at is to make that, to have time for the students who are at home to also have some synchronous interaction either with the entire class while the kids who are in the room and the kids are at home. Some teachers have them interacting together. Other teachers do it so that they'll do some time with the students in front of them. And then they'll turn their attention and work synchronously with all of the students at home while the students in the classroom are doing things independently. Like you would, you know, especially for the older students where they're able to do that, um, on their own. So we are trying to have more direct interaction with the classroom teacher for all students, whether they're at home or in the school. We're just trying to get that interaction time to be really purposeful and time well spent.
And we think that down the road that, um, it, it sounds a little confusing to me right now, but you think that down the road, this is going to be a healthier environment for the students to learn at, at home rather than, you know, having the synchronous teacher there all, all the time, whether they're actually synced up or not, right? But she's always, or he is always there. They are always there.
Yes, and that's what we're looking for is there are more effective ways for students to engage in learning. And we're just not convinced that the teacher, having the students all together online for a lengthy period of time is achieving that.
I see. Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, and, and I would, I just want to add, there, this is a, a model that many of our surrounding districts have used since the beginning. So we're kind, we've kind of looked at what they're doing that seems to be effective and modeling enough for that.
And you did mention there was some technology in the classrooms, um, sounding a little bit similar to what's in the high school? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that is correct. Yeah, so in our elementary and, um, middle schools, all of our classrooms will have, um, webcams that allow the teacher to see the children at home and the children at home to see the kids in the classroom as well. They have a second monitor and then they also have a Bluetooth wireless headset. So the teacher isn't stuck in front of their computer going to stuff it is. So, so we have that technology. Most of it is in at that point. And again, that will make that experience on the days that the students are not in person, able to be more interactive and engaging.
That, that's great. And you said all the classrooms or almost all the classrooms, uh, elementary?
It's going to be all the classrooms. We, we're still waiting on the webcam and the.
Do we have a timeline? Because that sounds exciting.
Yes, if that should be in, um, uh, I know the webcams are coming in, according to our Director of Technology. So we, hopefully by, um, the end of this week, mid-next week, we'll have all of the equipment in, in the classrooms. And some of it's already there, so.
That's awesome. That's awesome. It sounds though that it's, it's moving so quickly. Are the teachers able to, um, to navigate all that technology? Is there, is there some help that they might need and maybe?
And that, to be honest, that's, that's part of what, um, we're hoping to achieve on Mondays also is, uh, to allow the teachers more time, um, to get used to teaching in that environment, create lessons that are more conducive to that environment and really support, get support from one another, um, on how to do that effectively.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, if there's anything we can do to help, um, with, with that. I know that, that the high school kids helped put all the technology together for the high school, so, um, yeah, if you need some volunteers, I can volunteer somebody.
Great. Thanks, DJ.
You always volunteers. It's okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other comments from any board members? Okay, um, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. Teresa Brown.
Very interesting.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.